We will call the second Scottsburg City Council meeting to order in the year 2020. And also, we had one last week, so we want to welcome everyone and the second City Council meeting here for Scottsburg. A little bit of a change of events to what we've had the past. The first thing we would like to do would be to have prayer. We're going to have the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody will stand please, come and open up your prayer. Father, we come before you as a city of Scottsburg just to thank you and praise your name, Father, for the opportunity we have to live in a wonderful city. And we pray for your wisdom, we pray for your, Father, clarity of these decisions, an understanding of it, a spirit of discernment, Father, in all these things. We thank you for your presence and Jesus said we pray, amen. To the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you may, you can see. Our clerk here will take the roll call.
Mayor Amy.
Here.
Chris Alfredson.
Here.
Bill Homblin.
Here.
Rick Mans.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Chuck Rowe.
Here. Has council had the opportunity to purvey the minutes? And approve the minutes? Are there any changes you would like to make?
Now, here I would ask for a motion to... Can I have a question just a minute on the ordinance 2020-1?
Okay.
When it says that it's approved, the first reading, it says a motion to approve first reading, what does that mean? Counsel, what does that mean, approve the first reading? Does it mean that you've approved what it states or approved the reading? I got mixed up whenever they were talking back and forth up there, trying to say, well, we're going to put this off, and I'm going to put it off, and what we're going to do with Josh, I just wouldn't understand what the plan is.
I was under the impression that both ordinances had been approved on first reading as they were drafted, as they were drafted, that's the law.
So the first reading says that you've approved closing both of those, vacating both of those, is that what it says?
Yes, that's what the draft says.
Okay.
But I thought that...
I didn't think that's what was going on.
I let John say some of the fact that that change could be made on the second reading.
Correct.
Do you want to make any changes?
Correct.
That's what I thought he said.
Right.
It's not approved.
I didn't hear what you got to talk about.
Right. So, but that's what, that's the way I understood it. Counsel, that's fine. So that's done correctly.
That's the way I understood it, yeah.
Okay.
Counsel, is that clear answered?
Okay.
It's like you don't...
Okay, then we have a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Minutes passed. We're going to have the second reading at the end. Ordinance 2020-1, which is the ordinance to vacate a portion of Wondus Street. Listen, we want to ask for... Is the public, is it timed now?
The public here is over, but you're certain to create to ask comments from the council on the public or in that order or a reversal.
What comments does council have?
Well, I went back, I had a couple of questions that I wanted to have answered in behind me before, you know, we worked on this second, third reading. And I did, my understanding was that it passed on the first reading last week. Just, that's for clarification. Being the old guy on the council, you go back along where you have some history on these things. Back in the nineties, Kerry, you'll remember this, the property that, where a park is now, belonged to Reel Industries. And Bill Graham worked with Sam Loyalty and Earl Murray to get seven acres, a little over seven acres donated to the city for the purpose of that park. Otherwise, it wouldn't be a park there now. But anyway, the property ran from almost the corner factory all the way across the dam and back up to where the mayor's residence is, the former mayor's residence. I wanted to find out, was this property part of that? Did Bill acquire that, or, you know, is this a second, that was a question I had. Second question I had it was, does the, does the, right away, the street cul-de-sac, where does that lie on the property? So I found out that no, that this was not part of the original property that was given to the city through the mayor by Mr. Murray and Miss Royt, that Bill Graham purchased that property from the Lucas's as part of that development over there. I guess that was left over. So anyway, I looked at the property, and it's my understanding that it was planted around that cul-de-sac. Okay? In other words, if we extended, even if we wanted to extend one of the street and put that cul-de-sac in there, it would end up in the middle of the property, that there are lots planted around the cul-de-sac. So, and it looks like it's probably the lowest part of, I mean, it's a ravine, basically. So if we wanted, if the city wanted to build that up and put a cul-de-sac in there for whatever reason, there'd be a lot of filth, there'd be a lot of expense in doing that. And even at that, if we did it, there's no, there's no access to the park except across private property. I mean, you could walk out there and turn around and go back if you want, but there's, you know, it doesn't go all the way across to the park on the other side. So there's no way to put a walkway in there. And then I looked at, well, it is planted, what if someone wanted to build homes in there? I mean, a developer. Well, by now, if you've been over there, there's those electric lines, those power lines right across the back, there's no way that it would be suitable for any kind of housing. So that's just, that's what I've been, anybody else have any issues or not?
Well, you know, I wanted to look sadly at the grain to see, see what it was locked in. And it just wasn't. There's, the amount of money that we would have to put into that property to make it feasible for usable by the city would be amazing. It was amazing, the amount of water that I saw just line up. So that was one of my concerns. Is it really usable land that we could reasonably, at an expense to the taxpayer, you know, a reasonable expense? And I don't, I don't see that, not, not in today's conditions of rain, we get these... Well, honey, rains more often than we ever did.
Well, it's a flood plain.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
It happens.
It's flood plain. We've always done that.
Yeah.
I also think the second and third, Chuck, and then Rick's point, if you look at, to Chuck's point, with the grain of the land, where we'd have to get that to, to be a usable property, you're talking in excess of seventy, eighty thousand dollars that taxpayers will have to fund in order to get that to where it needs to be. That is, that is including finished and plated area, that cul-de-sac. Or if you were to move on from that, you would have to pay in excess of the drainage system that currently goes through, that is my district, I represent Mr. Graham, a lot of you in this room, I know how bad firsthand those drainage issues are. If you look at this weekend as a prime example, you're stepping in muddles every which way that you had to walk. So as far as looking at this property and how it's, how it's set now, just the basic topology, from the finished part of Wondus Street, you're going straight down a hill, basically into a flood plain, which we all are aware of. It would take in excess of seventy, eighty thousand dollars in order to degrade that land in itself to prevent flooding for future use. To Chuck's point also, having a little bit of background in development, land development, working with developers on a firsthand basis, this land is what, especially in the development road, we call a nonstarter. There's not going to be any homes that will be built on this land, it's not possible, it's not feasible, there's no growth to be had on that. So again, to me, it's hard to justify the eighty thousand dollar, ninety thousand dollar potential price tag with the growth of this land just to make it usable as it currently stands.
You know, Chris, do you guys have any comments?
My concern is park access. And like I said, I went over and also looked at the flood, over Luke and throwback around Dog Park, and you know, the trail that intersects with the walkway back along the rubber tracks. I think there's good access there, there's good access along Lake Shore Drive there to the park, so I think there's plenty of access going into the park. So I don't necessarily think that we need to take a look at Wondus Street for even more access.
Well, but the problem is that even if we develop what we have, you still wouldn't be able to access the park without crossing...
Without crossing private property.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, but I think that came up in our last meeting.
Well, but I thought, you know, my understanding from that meeting was that it go all the way through. Now, that the lots go through, but you know, you have to imagine the cul-de-sac in there are eighty-five to a hundred foot lots, you know, beyond that around the circle, so that's all private property.
Who owns that?
I believe that Bill Graham does.
Those lots, all those lots?
I think he does. I don't think, and I could be wrong, but I think, I don't know who planted all that to begin with, but I think he owns the lots.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, in nineteen fifty-eight, when I purchased my property, the, that lot, that street wasn't in front of my house, Wondus Street wasn't in front of my house. When I bought that, I was wanting my lot down there where Graham's house is. And I was told that, I see L. Lewis, that's who I was dealing with. And ZL said, you can't build anything down there, you can't put my, but my, the street goes down there, and he plotted all the way up there, the same way he plotted the street going all the way down there. And then, he then said that there was going to be a turnaround, that this was going to be a dead end street, and there's going to be a turnaround there. And it's my understanding that the turnaround was going to be in front of Griffith's house. I didn't, of course, there wasn't nothing, you'd look at it from the sky view to tell you where the turnaround was.
Sure.
It was just a plot that ZL had. And I said, well, so he said, you can't, the power lines down there, it's wet down there, but at that time, it was just the woods.
So the power lines there even named?
Oh, well, the power line goes all the way across the lake.
Well, I know, but I didn't know, I didn't know where they were putting it.
Yeah, he said you can't build anything under the power lines because they won't let you build under the power line, number one. And number two, that you couldn't, you couldn't get television reception, you couldn't get radio reception, you couldn't get nothing under those power lines. So he said, those lots down there, I don't think there's anything we can do with them, and you can't build out of it. And I said, okay. But I thought the dead end street was going to be right there where Griffith's house, where that turnaround was. I didn't know the turnaround was all the way down there.
It's on down, if you look, well, if you drive down that street and look, the way I visualize it, it is, it is down in the bottom of that vine, in the middle of those trees.
Yes, it's right there in front of Bill's house.
So, but I always wondered, you know, I used to, I used to frequent that thing, but I always wondered why Wondus Street gets empty.
Yeah, yeah, and then ZL then gave that street so the city would take care of it, gave it to the city, is my understanding. And I thought, well, maybe they put a turnaround right down in front of Griffith's house, but I didn't know the turnaround was all the way down. So, so anyhow, you're, what you're telling me is, why, I'm saying why, why do you want to give away this property? Probably two acres there, if you go all the way down through there. I mean, as wide as that street is, all the way down, I don't know how much, how far it is down there, but it's, you know, I don't know if I can give it up all that far enough.
As wide as that street is, and you're saying it's not worth anything, I guess, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's to me, and I'll just speak for me, but we vacated other right ways, but one was Shapinski. You know, why would we want to give that away?
Yeah, I do.
I mean, I just, it's, the city's not going to do anything with it. We, we've, we've owned those requests in the past.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, why don't they buy it? Why don't you buy it? If you want to take orders?
Yeah.
I'll pay five thousand bucks right now for it. You say it ain't worth it, nothing. I'll start to bid, five thousand, you know.
That's a lot.
You know, anybody wants to bid against me, just sell it to me. But I tell you, there won't be any way that the mayor can get to his house, because his house, his drive, he already decided that he's going to run his driveway back and forth across city property.
Did the mayor put in that drive?
Yeah, I don't know.
What, drive?
You haven't put it in there.
With the street would have been?
Uh-huh.
He put that in?
Mm-hmm.
You got to reimburse him.
I don't know, it was a backswing across, but I don't know who put it in.
You reimbursed him for those costs?
Well, I don't care, I mean...
I think if you vacate the property, I don't think you can put a property value on a, what a street would have been.
Why not?
What we did in those Shapinskis.
I don't know.
We have, I'm not talking about the Shapinskis.
They're anyway. I don't have no horse running in that race over the Shapinskis, I got one running in this one.
You got to focus in the, anyway.
I don't. I don't say give them city property away anyhow.
It's not city property, it's his property, it's an easement there.
Whose property?
That is where the street would have gone if they had to build a street, but there's no street there.
City property.
It hasn't been vacated, because nobody else is going to use it.
It's city property. You tell me it's not city property? Where I, who'd I buy it from?
The property around your house is if there's an easement.
Uh-huh.
But you bought that, and it's not city property.
Yes, it is.
You bought it.
No, there's ten foot.
You bought, you made that.
There's ten foot easement on both sides of my property.
That's right.
Not, not my property now.
But it's your property.
Uh-huh.
Same with the street, and now the alleyway there. We had that out, that alley was vacated. We didn't have to pay anything for it, it was vacated because there wasn't any use for it.
You can get away city property if you all want it, if you want it to be put away.
We own the property.
Who's lead?
The funeral home owned that property. So it was an easement there, when the Chinese restaurant kind of went afire, the lunch department used their rock to be able to drive down where that alleyway used to be, so they could get back into that, so they could work, and the fire department. We still own that property, there was some damage made, there were some lights, and they paid for it. I wasn't going to complain about it, what they were doing was a good thing, but there's no value on that property because it's an easement. Isaiah put charging cords or pods on that property there on Lane Street, and there on Wondus Street, let people charge their golf carts up out of your side yard. That's not fair to you. But that is an easement there, it's not, it's property to you, but the city has a rock to dig it up, put a sewer, replace a sewer, water lawn, or anything else. That is what they have the right to do. And they can put it back the best they can, but you're going to be like me, you're going to get out there, go throw that thing down, sod it in or seed it, whatever, because it's still your property. Saying that's still my property down on First Street.
I don't understand your reasoning, but...
Let me, let me break some...
I have a tough time with yours.
I understand. Let me bring some disinformation. I was thinking this was just an easement for a street, which would be twenty feet wide, but it's not. Apparently, it's, it's a fifty foot wide by a hundred foot in length.
I would guess it's more of over two hundred.
Two hundred, probably.
Probably, two fifty at the most, it's a little, I think a little over two hundred, it's fifty foot wide.
So...
It's about a third of an acre, I would guess.
And currently, there are plots around it, and so many times someone accesses the city, the park, they're actually crossing private property.
Exactly, there's no way around it.
Who's currently, you don't, no, who owns that property?
Pardon?
Those lots around that? That was plotted that way, on the very front end, it was plotted that way.
Who owns all that property?
Mr. Graham owns the north and the south parcel, the entire parcel.
All those lots all way around that thing?
Yes, sir.
Where do you buy it?
From Lucas.
I guess, that's what I understand.
I don't think he does.
He owns, and he bought it from Catherine Lucas, according to the plaque.
I know, I know he bought where his house is from Catherine. Those, those lots were plotted all the way around that, I thought, before he ever got there.
But I think he bought them from Catherine also.
He bought lots nine through sixty that were plotted at the time?
And that's one of the reasons I want to find out who, who made, who petitioned to have the driveway vacated, because I didn't know if there was a property on the driveway. But I believe Bill Graham owns all of it.
Here's where I was getting at, it was just a street, it says that a portion of Wondus Street that is unused and never opened and is planted as an area running east and west in the middle of property owned by William H. Graham at six seventy-six Wondus Street, Scottsburg, and it's vacated as a public street in ownership of the vacated area of the street, showing invested in William H. Graham. It says, item two, the vacation of the street by the city of Scottsburg subject to the reservation by the city easement, the city of easements, utility purposes, and a vacated portion of the street. The city reserves the right to maintain any utilities now located in the vacated portion of the street. So that's what I'm saying, just a street, not all the property. So is there, I mean, I'm assuming it's just a street that's in that plot down there, is that correct?
It's just the street and the cul-de-sac. So I mean, my...
It's called South and West.
I mean, where was this?
Go all the way down through the South.
On, where you...
Oh, you mean the cul-de-sac all the way down.
One.
It's cul-de-sac, oh, it's south. Kerry, if it was you that lived in that house, and if you came to the council and wanted that street vacated, I wouldn't have a problem with that either, that, so it's not because it's Bill Graham's property.
I don't have a problem with that either. I just, I just...
Just to clarify that with you.
All right, okay.
Well, I don't have a problem with either, I have a problem with the city giving away property.
Well, you know, I look, and I don't know how long ago this was, but in Bill Hogan, may recall, I think, probably our time on the council, but the Lane Street in front of your house was, was...
Supposed to go straight?
It's supposed to go straight all the way over Cedar Street.
Right.
A street, you know, that'd be a long street, that would be a street that actually the city could, could have paved and built houses on.
Right.
But when that was, you know, when they asked for that to be vacated, I don't remember there being anybody at that meeting. You know, and that's, that's more property and more usable property than this. So, I mean, I, I'm just saying, you know, the, the way we have done this in the past is if, if there's no, if there's no use for the property, we vacate it, or have.
And looking at the plot, the plot does go from Wondus Street, extends straight down, and basically goes right in front of his house.
It does, it does.
Yeah.
And the cul-de-sac would be right in front of his porch, right, right in the lowest part of the property, right in the ravine.
Currently, the city, because we generate no tax dollars from this, we own it, we have it, it floods, right, correct me if I'm wrong, we generate no tax dollars from this. By vacating it, this property that floods, that is going to be a headache, would increase the value of the property of the people that get it, correct me if I'm wrong, both streets would end up, a third of an acre in the town added to their lot, to their land, would increase the value, then the city would get an increase of property taxes. Am I not correct?
Yeah, probably, maybe probably twenty bucks, or whatever.
But right now, it's twenty bucks I don't have. But I'd sell it.
Then you'll have it, then you'll have it.
Sell it. Put a price on it.
I don't, I don't know how the city would sell.
Well, I think, I think the question...
I know school was a very...
If you're talking about money, then you're not really talking about money.
Well, I don't know what, we increased the value of a third of an acre in the city on somebody's home, I don't know that for a fact.
Well, Kerry, correct me if I'm wrong, I think if we were to sell the city, we'd have to obviously have an appraised value, there would be an appraiser that would go and look at the property, obviously with it standing in a flood plain, has to be all agreed upon, the appraisal will not be very high. Again, I think to Mr. Hogan's, Councilman Hogan's point, if we were to have an appraised value at, say, five thousand dollars, Mr. Graham could come back and say, well, the kit, for me keeping up the infrastructure for however long I did, for paving the road or mowing the yard, he can come back to us, and we could be in a litigation battle above in excess of five thousand dollars.
If you're going to talk about, if you're going to talk about that, there's people that mow, mow cities' property all the time, and if you're going to say that they have a right to that property because they mow it, you've got it everywhere.
I understand, I understand your point.
Something a person would like that.
Absolutely, I totally understand your point, but I'm saying at the same time, if we were to vacate that, instead of going through a litigation battle that could last however long, and to Councilman Man's point as well, we are generating zero tax revenue off this property as it is, whether that's twenty bucks or eighty bucks, it's better than zero dollars. So I think that is something to consider.
It's okay, do whatever you want to do, I'm just going out my... You know, we have for the council this motion to vacate the property. And I think first, we have to vote, is this you want to do this, you want to continue discussion, what this council's pleasure. But I said, I think the first thing I'm going to be to do is ask for a vote to take this, if you don't want to do that, then we can continue other options. That'd be the normal course of action.
I would think, ask the council to have any other comments or questions, and monitor the council, now that we've heard from the public. And then once that has concluded, ask if there is a motion to pass 2020-1, if there's a motion, there is, or if there isn't, there isn't.
So is there, are there comments in, Councilman Ed?
So all I need to say?
I don't have a problem with it. Okay, then is there a motion to pass 2020-1 as presented? I'll make the motion. Who makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans, second. Are there comments to be made by council after the second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passes on second reading. So we'll go to the second reading of ordinance 2020-2, an ordinance to vacate a portion of High Street. And is there a correction on the...
There's a correction on the legal description of what would be a vacated, I did not realize until the last meeting that Sarah Felton owned that little garage on what would be the southeast corner of the Jerry Mills property. So the amendment to 2020-2 is that if this street is vacated, that property adjoining that garage would go to Felton, not to the Mills, because she is adjoining it. And that's where I was telling Robert Japanski, who was here, how he would have access to that garage.
So that he will still have the access, you...
Yeah, yeah. And he still both get half of the, the drive coming in, they'd get half, twenty feet each, because that's a forty foot street, to each adjoining owner, except right in front of that garage and all those felters, it's all, it's... front of that garage and all those felters, because it's, it's, twenty feet on that north side is that little garage, property, and twenty feet on the south is her home property.
Questions or comments by council?
Well, Mr. Japanski's having.
He's grooving with it, dude.
He's grooving, well, I don't think he's grooving with it.
So the amendment, Harry, would be added in there?
Yes, I already drafted that language, so if there was a motion to pass, it would be to pass to amend twenty twenty, uh, two as amended, to amend it and then pass as amended.
Let me read the amended. Let's just, let me just read the number one, a portion of High Street that is unused and never opened and is planted as an area running east and west between properties owned by Jam Contractors LLC at three seventy North Range Street, Scottsburg, Indiana, and by Sarah Felton on the north of the street, and the property owned by Sarah Felton at two eighty-seven North Range Street, Scottsburg, Indiana. On the south is vacated as a public street, ownership of the north, one half, the vacant street shall be vested in Jam Contractors LLC. For that part of the street abutting, the property of Jam Contractors LLC shall be vested in Sarah Felton for that part of the street abutting, the property of Sarah Felton on the north ownership. And the south, one half of the vacant street shall be vested in Sarah Felton. So that's the amended verbiage to that. So if there are no other comments, then do I have a motion to accept the ordinance two thousand two as amended?
I'll make the motion.
amended, then who should I check, second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Passed. Second.
Is that a motion to amend the ordinance?
I, I've got the pen, as amended.
As amended.
Is that a motion to amend the ordinance?
Okay, well, my motion was amended.
Which would be that motion, and now you'll need a motion to pass on second. Sorry about that.
Now we need a motion to approve on second.
To approve, yeah. It's a motion to approve, second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign?
So the amendment passed and the motion passed. Let's take a good note of this one. I had not been by the property, you checked it out, but I got a call from Mr. Mills that said they have started demolishing that house. Have they, have you seen it? I would ask the council, and consider a motion to suspend the rules and pass on third reading.
I'll make the motion, yeah, I think it's important.
Should I make the motion to suspend the rules and pass the third motion, or second?
I'll second.
Seconding. So now we, we want to make, then go forward.
We have to vote on that.
It needs to be made, okay. So let's, all in favor, suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? And then heard, it's passed. So let's go ahead and then with the motion on the third reading, to pass ordinance two thousand two dash two on third and final reading. With a motion to pass this.
I'm making a motion.
Make a motion, make my, Mr. Hogan, second?
I'll second.
We should have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion to pass third and final reading. So that portion of it is vacated on High Street. What new business do we have?
Mayor, I'd like to bring up something that, that I think is a concern. There are persistent rumors in the community that American Science Park is closing. Anita Walker told me that she, you know, it, it's affecting, we also need bankroll call, she had a woman call, wanting to, to secure the bankroll for her wedding next September, but she was afraid to do so because the rumor is that the Science Park closed in June. We had, well, Mark Slay, superintendent of schools, asked me about these concerns because of the training that they do with high school kids, that they do with bodies and things like that, and I told him that that's, that's not true, it's not closing. We have been working with the sheriff's office to provide training to inmates while they're incarcerated, and there's been some concern expressed from, from their office, but we want to head with this, we don't want to spend, I'm working on this, if Science Park closed, so I don't know what we need to do to put those rumors aside, but I think that's what we do.
Well, let's just address that, I'm going to give a state of the city address probably early February, and this is part of one of those addresses. This, this has been one of, one of the top issues that we have had. Right now, the Mid America Science Park's hard cost to operate is two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Two hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's our utilities, that's the insurance, and we have to pay a portion, we have to pay a small tax on portions that we rent out. And, you know, a beautiful facility, but basically, the only income we have is about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars on, on, on rent. That's the income that we have coming in, two hundred and forty thousand in hard cost, and the hard cost does not count any, any labor in them. So the question is, how do we continue on with this property? Now, with that, we go down another trail. This property was begun in about two thousand nine, I would say two thousand nine, through there, opened in two thousand ten, and we have a twenty-year, we have a twenty-year warranty on this property. That warranty is forgivable, provided we don't sell it or close it. Sell or close it. So we're going to have the property remain open, you know, or we have to pay the federal government back eight million dollars. So we don't want to pay the government back eight million dollars, it's a valuable asset. But we have folks out there not paying any rent. We met with Vincent University, they had two hundred and sixty-eight folks come through there last year, at a meanhead cost of a thousand dollars a person. So they took in two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and we got nothing. We have been in negotiations, we have asked them to pay those hard costs of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I've asked, actually asked for an extra sixty thousand, because I would like to be able to have a little bit extra to be able to cover a boiler going down, or a roof leak. We, we feel that the rent coming in is currently from the reception center, can help pay operational costs for labor to manage it. We plan on having, we're going to see what happens, we're planning on having Scottsburg Janitorial clean it, Scottsburg Parks mowed it, and, you know. So, again, we're continuing with negotiations with Vincent University, IB Tech is out there as well, but it's basically Scott School District one and two, and Crowesville are out there, nobody's paying rent, and, you know. So there it has been the problem, so that's why the rumors are going around. We do have a plan, you know, unless, you know, so to keep it open, so it will not close. So folks want to come out there, rent, rent the room, rent different rooms that we have, we have an amazing facility out there. So, but I repeat, it's not.
Uh, this, uh, by, this is do whatever we can to, to make those rooms go away because of handicapping what we're trying to do.
Yep, yep. So this has been, the big question is, you know, is operation, we can, we can certainly cut areas back and maintain the property ongoing. So, but we're certainly, we certainly need the two hundred and forty thousand dollar street utilities, and we're going to keep them going. And so, you have a couple of questions, Chuck, Chuck has been kind of the liaison from council out there, so Chuck's been working on this since, on last May, Chuck?
Last, well, probably November two thousand eighteen.
Okay. So, uh.
Is there any companies out there, it was originally built to help fledgling companies to start their.
That was one of the things, was one of the intended purposes of the incubators and things like that, I think, that do real nits that, that exist out there right now, it's industrial training, trying to.
But there is no company out there that.
Well, there, we, we know there's no fledgling companies.
Oh, okay. I knew that that's what was originally out there.
Well, that, that's a part of it, but there were, there were other aspects of it as well, but again, it seems like, you know, the industrial training that we can offer out there, the, there are plans to offer training to inmates while they're incarcerated, so they come out and they have some kind of skills, marketable skills, that maybe prevent them from falling back into the same pattern of behavior. We have, I'd like to sit and do more with, with our high school kids, offering classes to the universities, you know, we have Purdue offers credits out there, can, can do that, IB Tech, Vincent's, I U S, so lots of, lots of potential out there. But it has, it has to be, it has to be grown, has to be managed properly, so, and Eric tried, we need to, we need to figure out ways to curb those costs.
Well, it's a great facility, I mean, it's great, I, we just need to make money with it, or.
Well, I, I don't know if we'll ever make money, but we have to make some things, you know, I mean, we, we.
There are certain things, you know, and I, I'm just going to speak, put hope on the student, aside, you know, we started that for our kids, and I can tell you, I'm name after name of students, some who never earned a high school diploma, but got a skill and is out there paying taxes, instead of living off the system, they're paying taxes, because we gave them a skill with the welding or whatever. Not, not counting all the ones that went through and then now they're out there looking for higher paying jobs. Not every kid goes to college, and as an educator, we bought into that many years ago, and we're going to send every kid to college, well, you know, there's nothing wrong with getting a trade, my dad spent thirty years of Cummins, and he was hero in my life, took care of us, raised us, we need to provide the same opportunities. Our schools don't make, we don't make money off our schools, and I agree with you, we should cut it as, you know, get it as close as we can, but you can't count the value of turn, you know, we all complained about the problems we had. A lot of our young people have no hope, we're giving them hope, and they become taxpayers. I, I don't, you know, after eight years of working out, you know, working with them, it, it really is amazing, and just, I just wanted to share my thoughts, because I got to hand a lot of diplomas to kids, and I don't think they would walk that stage if they didn't have a, a skill like that.
If, if any of you are registered, we have a robotics competition, Bobby's sitting right over here, Bobby, I don't want to steal your thunder, but we have, how many teams registered for Saturday's competition?
We have thirty-seven teams registered, and it's, they are from the region, the majority of teams, I would say, but fair split are Scott County teams, and the really exciting thing is that we have four opportunities for teams to qualify to go to state, and state for robotics for the Vex IQ is held at the Lucas Oil Stadium. So they, they cover that football field, and they, they put these young players on there, and it is exciting if you have the opportunity to go, but certainly, this Saturday from ten to two, it's open, we'd love to have to come out and check it out.
You don't have to stay long, but it just, I mean, you're welcome to stay as long as you want, because, just like a bee hive back there with all those kids and the robots, and, and, and if anybody, while you're there, wants a, a share of the training facility, I'll be glad to do that, I'll do that.
Chuck, do they design the old robot?
They, it, it, yes and no, at, at that age, you can't just turn them loose and say, build a robot, so there is, I mean, these kids, you know, the remote controls, they drive the robots, and, and there's a game that they are doing, that they're trying to perform given tasks on the field in one minute. They, the kids usually, when they start, they, they follow the directions and have kind of a generic robot that will function, but as kids, I mean, because I've watched this develop, you know, and kids are in it a few years, you can see that their minds are starting to, hey, what if it, what if it did this, what if it did this, and then they, then they make those, those operations, the kids can do it all, the coaches are there to support, but it, it should be all kid driven.
I, I was out there, one of those, and it's, it really is, it's really is exciting to see these kids take part in that, and let me say this, as your mayor, I have no intention of charging Scott County, Sub-District one, two, or Crowesville, simply because we're taking TIF money, and when we take TIF money, that's money that could have gone to schools as well, so I feel that the schools are paying because of it, so I don't intend to charge them, but I do feel that IB Tech and Vincent University, who are actually charging tuition costs to come in there, should be paying, should be paying their fair share of that, paying utilities. So I told Vincent, I'm just actually paying utilities, you know, just paying the utilities. So I was talking to the council here next to me, and, and I'm trying to draft a contract to that effect, and get this to them, and see if we can get something going along that line, and they indicated they were willing to do so, so. And the programs, just to give you an idea of what impacted was happening on our kids, when I started at the high school, I think our graduation rate was in the seventy-something percent. By starting programs like this, the last year I was there, we were almost ninety percent graduation rate. So, and I, it's not because of me, it's because of the good instructors we have, and the programs we started, and Mid America Science Park is a big part of it, we sent a lot of kids out there, so, now I'm not there anymore, I don't know how many they have this year, but I think Chuck, you said, it's pretty packed, isn't it?
I was like, I was rooting the other day, and there weren't many empty seats in there.
Yeah, and, and you got, if you have a good instructor, you know, kids, and they see value in it, they'll come. Now Vincent University is not what they're talking about. So Vincent University is a program that is, go ahead Chuck, tell them about training and leadership, training in more of the different areas of Vincent.
Let me kind of put you on the spot, Linda's the Training Center Director, Linda Gilroy.
Vincent's teaches the leadership, which is college credit courses, so what people can go on if they want to go on in the college, they also do some certificates, we even know that a lot of the people that are going through these classes are not going to go on to college, but what they're getting is that they can find if they take these classes through Vincent's, and they can walk in and manufacture a company, and they're like, oh, wow, so having a Vincent's or an IB Tech or an I U S, potential Purdue as well, is really important backing, and it gets people motivated. When we talk about the Vex Robotics, I can only tell you that Louisville was named number ten in the line of all cities in danger of collapsing economically because they are not up to speed on AI, so we're going to talk about a big triple down, we're going to follow them, so I think that the next robotic program is the way, AI is the way that we're going to have to go, Fox Chain, cybersecurity, great thing about the Science Park is it has two secure rooms, so we could actually emulate that as we expand, and that is our goal, we want to, you know, manufacturing aside, you're correct, fifty percent of people of college or high school kids don't go on to college, and of those, twenty percent drop out the first year because they don't want to take prerequisites, they don't need to take sociology, the butterfly, they want to get some meat, and what they want to do for a living, now that the state is kind of pushing that in high school, the park is going to be even more important, because then those kids can follow their passion, and not have the follow-up prerequisites, not to psychologies and do it, and they all three of them go, but my kids, I think, would have been happier if they had been able to get to destruction, that's what we're giving them, we're giving them that potential to go on and succeed, let it be due to a difficulty, whether they do it in university or study.
Can I say one other thing there, I, I, I don't give you talk about, about what's going on out there, but another thing that Vincent's has done, we, we have a local manufacturing group, Craig Malt, the, the plant manager at, at Samtech, got local manufacturers together that, they all have, have similar training needs, you know, they realized that there's not a lot of new employees out there, so they, they invest in their employees, they train them, they promote them from within, but they all have similar needs as far as maintenance and, and all kinds of things, but they got together as a group, and they said, we, we would like to have our employees trained on this, 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 and this, so they worked with Vincent University, gave them those skills, and Vincent built a curriculum that would, would do those trainings, then, then we, we paid Vincent to do that, but now we own this, this curriculum, and we, we bring employees in from, from, how many different manufacturers have sent people now?
At least twelve.
Oh, like twelve?
Yeah, the army is unique. Yeah, the RMA is unique in that it's very collaborative, they don't share, pick their employees, uh, but they do share training costs, um, they also share best practices, which is really unique. And I was a part of the metal manufacturing alliance, and most people pay sixteen hundred dollars a year and nobody shows up, and everybody's suspicious of everybody. So, uh, we were able to bring Valio in recently, they were extremely pleased at how collaborative we actually are. We went up to GCM in Salem last week, and it was very, very well received, so we're bringing in more, uh, Washington County manufacturers as well.
And, and, and that's part of Linda's job responsibility, is to find manufacturers who will send their people there to be trained, and, and then we, we pay an instructor, teach the class, then we keep the money. So tho- those are some of the revenue streams that we're, we're trying to build. In fact, at some, some meeting, I think, I, I would like to have Craig Malt come and explain a little about the RMA, so that our councilmen and citizens know.
Explain the RMA?
Well, it, it's the, the Manufacturers Alliance, uh, as I said, they, Craig Malt kind of spearheaded it, but, but it, uh, it involved with that is, uh, Samtech, uh, L P A, Multicolor, uh, help me here, Austin Tri-Hawk, there's Morgans in there, yeah.
Vikings.
Vikings, I mean, there, there are several of the local manufacturers who could come together and, and talk about their common needs and try to, you know, try to explore ways to, to help the cause. You know, they're, they're very, uh, very collaborative, they, they, they don't try to steal each other's employees and those kinds of things. You know, they sit in there with, with people from workforce development, they sit in there with people from Vincennes and from IB Tech and from Purdue, and, and try to figure out a way to, to build the skill locally employees. And that, that's a win-win, because it, uh, you know, it makes, it increases their level, increases their pay, uh, gives them more money to spend here on a bigger house or more money at Walmart.
So you hear him saying, vegetable soup, RMA, that's Regional Manufacturers Alliance.
Correct.
So, and that's the folks that I'm saying, had two hundred and sixty people go through, and we didn't get any money.
No, it was.
Is that not true?
That's not true.
Okay.
So the, the people from the RMA, uh, the, the classes that we taught, the classes that we own, the, the, uh, advanced manufacturing, one hundred and two hundred level classes, when they, when they put those people in there, they, they pay several thousand dollars a piece to put their people through there. But then they're able to collect money on the other end through workforce development or some kind of, you know, that there's, there's state money for, for them to go back and, and recruit that money from, because they're, they're investing in their employees, so it's, so it's kind of win-win.
So it's kind of grant money, the state subsidizes that?
Well, it's not really, I, I guess, I don't know what you mean by, by grant money, Linda, it's, it's money that, that the state puts out there for workforce development. I mean, I say this, would, would you term that a grant, or would you term it?
Sure, it's, it's the next level of funding, and it's Governor Hope's initiative to reimburse, uh, Indiana manufacturers for the training that they desperately need, and for training that they're already doing. So if they bring in their own employees or new hires, they're eligible to fifty thousand dollars per company or five thousand dollars per employee. Because they know that the labor market is low, and they're trying to, to bring up those skill space for people who have not gone on to college, or individuals then who are looking to, uh, who don't have, who have a high school diploma but don't have a college degree. They're also eligible for five thousand dollars to train in a high demand, and the high demand is manufacturing, IT, uh, transportation, logistics, construction. So there's a, there's the biggest need that we're currently having, we can't fund on the individual level. A person can only take one class on the manufacturer, on the employer's side, they can, they can do several, up to five thousand dollars. So either way, in fact, they're kind of covered for people, it's a matter of, of getting out, getting the word out, because I'll go out and people are like, oh, I can do that. We were talking to Madison Precision today, who comes in and, and trains the Madison Correctional Department in C and C at the park, and he was surprised, he didn't even know, and he does training. So there's money out there, we have it, it's also been extended to twenty twenty-one, they're going to put additional twenty million dollars in it, so that funding stream does go on for, uh, at the park. The, the RMA classes do make money, and the goal is to actually, in my opinion, is to expand out, I think, in Vincennes, as are IB Tech, if we can bring in retired teachers, people that actually know, uh, the park could, could make more money on that end as well.
And I had forgotten, Linda, about then, about the training to the female inmates from Madison, you know, from the, and we paid for, by the Department of Corrections to train them, instead of sitting themselves, that they learn tools, dieting. They come out and they, they have marketable skills. Those are the kinds of things that change lives and things begin.
Absolutely, and we have several examples, but we have a lady who went through the Madison Correctional, she's now a fastigaller in Indianapolis, and she's written me and said she would do anything she could to come back and train at the park because they turned her life around.
I'll get off my.
I don't think there's anything that gets this training or anything like that, it's just the biggest thing is, is, is painful.
And, and you're preaching to the choir, I mean, we, we got to figure out ways to offset that cost.
So what, the money, as I'm saying, when I asked Jen, how much money did we take in, she tells us right about a hundred thousand, a hundred and eighteen thousand, something like that, that we took in two thousand and nineteen at rent.
Okay.
That was our income, so.
We didn't see that, the way it was managed the contract, we do not see like what the RMA, what those are paying.
And, and those, we, we had to maybe put together a clear picture of what, what we're bringing in, what we're, we're going to get.
Yes, because that was my, going to be my question to Linda, when she got mentioned in the RMA, and I know she's gotten some extra members just since she's been on staff out there. That money, because of the way the management contract is, for now, that goes, you know, we don't see that money, so that would be revenue.
And that's confusing, because typically, the city of Scottsburg owns it, but they've given the economic development corporation a ninety-five thousand dollar contract to manage the property, and we're not doing that now. So that's all going to, uh, that, that'll, that'll be phased out, the city will manage it ourselves. So, uh, we, we, in border works, we, we are, I guess, we use industry, we have to make, we have to make job areas, Scottsburg wants to prove these job areas, uh, you know, so there's going to be a three-month process in phasing that out, and the city of Scottsburg actually take over management. So that's, that's what's happening, if we've made it as clear as money.
Yeah, it's not understanding that you're taking about a hundred thousand, well, a hundred thousand dollars, and your budget out there is seven hundred thousand.
You know, I wasn't there for last year's budget, I would say it's probably been more than, I'd say probably close to that or more.
Yep, and again, that goes back to what the E D C, you know.
Yeah, you don't know.
We don't know, because of like this.
That's part of, that's part of.
That's what we've been working on, to get that separated.
For a, for a year now.
For a transition.
Where we're getting there from.
Yeah.
Yeah, it didn't happen, it didn't happen overnight.
Nope.
So that's why there's going to be, going into two thousand and twenty here, this transition going forward, so that we can have accurate numbers for everybody, you know, so, uh, so. I hope we informed, cleared up, calmed fears, you know, so.
Yeah, it's great for somebody.
Great.
And we, we need it. Uh, just got to figure out a way.
And the, you're right, and Chuck and Rick's point, I mean, it's, it is, uh, they're educators, and education is going on, so, I like that. So again, we want your ideas, need your ideas, uh, this is an area that we've all been working on, so. Other questions, comments, concerns? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.